I think the last time I was here was the Phillies. You guys are into your business.
Okay, if we're gonna get started, all the needs of order. Um, I do want to mention that, um,
The meeting is being, um, recorded for review later. So I just want to start getting in the habit of announcing that every time we come together. So with that pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, first item is any public comment? Persons wishing to make public comment during the meeting on any items not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Okay, seeing none. Um, we don't have any formal announcements, but it would be remiss if I didn't congratulate our Eagles on a game, an amazing game last night.
It was enjoyable.
It was, it was fabulous.
There was no question.
And we are representing in some form or fashion up here.
Good work.
Um, item number four is our consent agenda. So I want to, um, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented for the following minutes of the January 27th, 2025 Board of Supervisor meeting and payment of the bills for February 10th, 2025.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor? And moving on to item number five, this is the, um, consider the minor subdivision plan LD dash 24 dash 010 dash 107 Nap Road. Ariana McConnell.
Thank you. Caraco's acquisitions has submitted a minor subdivision plan to subdivide an existing 2.9 acre parcel located at 107 Nap Road at the intersection of Sycamore Drive into two residential lots. The existing home and driveway will be retained on the new 29,233 square foot lot. The remaining 99,288 square foot undeveloped lot along Sycamore Drive will become Lot Two. An existing pool shed accessory building driveway and fences will be removed from Lot Two to allow for a future subdivision and development of single family homes. A draft revolution, revolution, a draft resolution prepared by the township solicitor includes two sidewalk options for your consideration. Township staff and consultants have had the opportunity to review the details of the land development plan and the corresponding review letters and waiver requests are in your packet. This application was presented and reviewed by the planning commission during their January 16th, 2025 public meeting. The minutes from that meeting are included in your packet. If the board chooses to grant this minor subdivision plan approval, they will need to do so by adopting a resolution which has been drafted by the township solicitor's office. The requested waivers are for consideration by the board. Tonight, we have Susan Rice, the town, uh, the applicant's engineer here to present their subdivision plan.
So the plan is on the screen in front of you. It is located at the intersection of Sycamore Drive and Nap Road, pretty straightforward, subdividing into two lots. The first lot would be for the existing farmhouse, uh, looking to get that minor subdivision done quickly, sell that off, and then work through the remainder of the subdivision. Uh, we'll be back in front of you with a three lot subdivision for Lot Two, um, pretty quickly. Um, so there's really not too much going on here. Um, we did submit a waiver request letter, and I think the resolution that was prepared is pretty clear on, um, the waivers that were requesting, uh, I could go through them if you would like. Okay, so the first waiver, uh, is for curb along the frontages. We're asking that we install curb along Nap Road, and that would continue and kind of finish the, the curbing along Nap Road if you have that in our, on our frontage. Um, and then we'd also be installing sidewalk along Nap Road. We would ask for a waiver to not install curb along Sycamore Drive, uh, but we would install sidewalk along Sycamore Drive. The curbing along Sycamore Drive, i- in my opinion, from an engineering standpoint, would do more harm than good because of the drainage, um, characteristics out of, out of that property. The, um, the drainage comes from the rear of the, the property and comes down the hill, the hill sort of, um, towards Sycamore Drive. So that would be one of the waivers. Yeah, okay, let, let me go through it. It, yeah, yeah. So, um, on page five of your resolution, it talks about sidewalk installation. And we are proposing. Being, right, right, right. And so, uh, we're proposing sidewalk along Nap Road and Sycamore Drive. We provided two options for you, uh, for that sidewalk along Sycamore Drive. Wasn't sure if you wanted it closer to the road or further away from the road. So, um, the options one and two, and I have them here, I can show you.
And our.
And the, the board has this in front of them as well.
Are these the exhibits that were not part of our packet then? Are these considered exhibits?
Them were, a much smaller version, so, yeah.
This is, okay.
Yeah, it was in our packet, but a much, so thank you for this.
Houses or something, it was just like one and then two.
So option one has the, the sidewalk. Uh, we have some challenges out there in terms of, there's some utility pools out there, there's some drainage, um, inlets out there. Uh, we are connecting to some existing sidewalk, um, north of our subdivision on Nap Road. We have some, um, steep banks out there, some trees. So it's not a straight shot, but we think this is, um, you know, the, the best location to avoid all of those obstacles out there. Um, option one, it gives you the verge, um, along Nap Road that you would need, uh, at least three and a half feet, um, four feet when we can kind of move back further. Uh, Sycamore Drive, this one has much more of a verge between the edge of the drive, uh, edge of the road. It's closer to 10 feet for that, um, whole length. And that's option one. It shows you the curb along that, the sidewalk going along that, and then continuing up along Sycamore. Option two is just looking at bringing some of that sidewalk closer to Sycamore Drive, uh, for a portion of the sidewalk that's along Sycamore Drive. Um, it still, you know, gets you, um, around all the obstacles that are out there, but the, the distance from the edge of road is, uh, cut down a little bit more, more between four and five feet. So those are your two options for the sidewalk.
But option two, there's no curb.
Neither option, so there's always curb on Nap Road.
Correct.
Um, neither option has curb on Sycamore Drive.
Oh.
That's a separate waiver request.
Okay.
For waiver requests.
Okay. Okay.
So if we, yeah, if we go on to, um, page six and the waivers and deferrals, the first one is, um, a waiver to not provide curbing along Sycamore Drive. We are providing curbing along that, asking for the waiver for Sycamore. Uh, this, the, the next three waivers are just to defer the design and installation of the road improvements along Nap and Sycamore to, uh, when we come back in for the subdivision of Lot Two. Um, we needed to figure out how you wanted to see curb and sidewalk before we designed it and installed it. Um, so that's why we're here asking you the question now, so that I can go back and design it and then resubmit it with the three lot subdivision. So these next three waivers, two, three, and four, are asking that we just defer the design and installation of those road improvements until we're out here, um, submitting plans to you for review and then also, um, doing the construction.
So, so that's the rationale of the six months and the two year.
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
Jim, what's your thought on the curbing on Sycamore? Can you tell, can you, Mike, or?
Sorry, I'll ask again. Um, look into our, um, township engineer to get an opinion on the, the curbing on Sycamore and why we would or wouldn't.
The drainage patterns along Sycamore seem to work better without curb. Uh, if you add curb, um, there'd be a lot of, uh, drainage issues that they would have to deal with, uh, making sure that the, the gutter flow stays out of the travel lane and making sure that the runoff from the property gets in the, uh, right places without making a mess.
And how do they do that? Would that be under, underground?
So I can get into that a little bit. Okay, yeah. So we're starting to look at the, um, the drainage and, uh, stormwater management for the three lots that we'll be coming in with. And we look, we're looking at some, um, trying to kind of capture some of that water that's coming down from the back and put it into a pipe and get it into the piping system so that it doesn't interfere with the drainage that's happening in the road. Hopefully that will work for us. Your storm sewer out there is also another issue that we would have if we would put curb in here and additional storm pipe is that your storm sewer is very shallow in this area. So trying to get additional pipes into that storm sewer, uh, would be difficult from an engineering perspective. And, um, that, the, the shallowness of those pipes kind of starts at Nap Road. So, and then comes up through Sycamore. Also, we will be installing individual on lot stormwater management systems. Um, typically, it will be an underground seepage bed. So, uh, that will also help with some of that runoff that's coming down the hill and, and getting into, um, Sycamore. It's very, Sycamore is, is very flat. It's not a crowned road, and there's a bit of a swell on, um, the upstream side. So, um, any kind of curb will kind of be blocking all of that drainage and maybe cause problems on the road.
So does the, without a curb, is the sidewalk going to have a shorter life? Is it going to be beat up, car hits it instead of having a curb to protect it? Cause now these sidewalks will be the responsibility of the homeowner.
Uh, I, I don't think so. The, the, the location that they're proposing to put the sidewalk is far enough away from the edge of the road because we wanted to maintain the roadside swell. So it should, uh, it, it, it should be fine.
Thanks. Have you, uh, are, are there going to be any drainage basins and stormwater basins?
On lots.
On lots as well? Cause that, you know, it feels as if a lot of the new builds that we have have taken that into consideration. And I haven't, I don't see that yet, but you're just not to that point in the process.
Correct. We, we're gonna do all of that design together. Did the curbing along that, the, um, sidewalk along Sycamore, it all kind of ties together. So we wanted to get your thoughts on that first, uh, so that we can come back in with a good design for everything.
Okay.
So, uh, waiver number one and two related to the curbs. And then three and four were about the sidewalks themselves, which we'll talk about in options one and two, whatever the board decides to go with, is that correct? And then four relates to trees, if you can go over that.
Oh, so, um, your ordinance allows, uh, street trees, um, existing trees to count towards your street tree requirement. Um, we do have to, in order to install the curb on the sidewalk along these roads, we are going to have to take down existing trees. The trees, there's many trees in the right of way. And we're not sure how many trees are going to be taken out, um, for the, to grade back in, um, for the, the curb in the sidewalk. So we're just asking that we make that evaluation with the next submission so that, um, if, if we have to take out more trees than expected, we'll be able to provide you with the correct amount of street trees. But we just don't know that until this gets designed and graded. We're going to comply with your street trees. We'll provide new ones or use existing ones that won't come out due to the grading.
And have you already accounted for how many trees have been removed from the initial property?
So Valerie, your, um, landscape consultant was out on site with me and, and Jim when we were evaluating, um, the curb and sidewalk. And, and she was out there and saw the trees that.
They're fresh cut.
Yeah, there were some that came down, but they were, um, not in great shape, and they were in locations that were coming down anyway. So we are doing that analysis of the, um, tree replacement with the next submission.
But you're not, you're not going to account for those trees that were taken down already that Valerie noted in her report?
Okay. They will be accounted for in our tree replacement calculation.
Okay, okay.
While we're talking about landscaping, one of the things that I noticed in the county planning commission, they had, um, made a recommendation, um, that we take this time with the applicant and the municipal may wish to consider, um, prior to final plan approval. Um, they noted that the current area of Lot Two, so I know that's not sold or anything, is heavily wooded, and any subdivision plan would likely lead to some sort of future land development. However, this, as this is considered a minor subdivision of two lots for residential usage, this may be the only time in which the township is able to weigh in on the process. So they kind of talk about, um, preserving the healthy trees and shrubs on the site wherever possible is what, um, our township zoning code speaks to, but they just thought that it was probably appropriate, um, to just talk about protecting, um, during construction, but to talk about it now. Do you have anything to weigh in on?
So, um, we are protecting to the greatest extent possible. And as I'm looking at the calculations now, we are still under the allowable disturbance, um, in your ordinance. Um, we will be providing all the landscaping that is required by your ordinance, your street trees, if there are any property buffers, um, in, in any other ordinance requirements will be provided with the next plan. And we are trying to maintain as much of the existing vegetation as possible. Uh, I, I should know that there is a very large tree on the property, um, but it's, it very poor health. And Valerie had indicated that it was on its last leg. So it's not a tree that they would consider worthy of saving or worthy of replacement. So that'll be noted on the plan as well.
I mean, it, it's hard to say goodbye to some of these old growth trees that are well established and so forth. But again, if it's not a healthy tree, that may make sense. Uh, but it's hard to also do the evaluation when there's, it's been left, um, I want to say naturalized almost for, it seems like decades, if that's fair to say. Um, so there's so many little trees and big trees, it's hard to know which ones are established and whatnot. But I would hate to have some of the bigger trees taken down.
Right, right.
Especially if they have, if they're viable.
Right.
That would be an important thing to work around in terms of placement of whatever it is, driveways and.
Yeah, and we are trying to work around that. The bulk of the trees are going to be taken out in the ultimate right of way to install the, the curb and the sidewalk.
Okay. And I, the other thing in terms of the curb versus sidewalk, it feels as if the curb is a little bit of a protection, not only for the integrity of the sidewalk itself, but the people in things that may be walking on the sidewalk. It just gives a little bit more protection to that, um, as well as things like plows and other vehicles that are coming down. Um, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, if we're letting go of that, are there any other ways to protect that? You know, that is something that, again, the homeowners will have to replace and repair. But also if there are people or children or pets, whatever, walking along the sidewalk, we, I want to make sure that, that we are, I know that there are two options. And the second one, it looks as if the sidewalk is further into the property?
So this, uh, the first one, um, the, the sidewalk is further away from the edge of road. It's about 10 feet away. It's set one foot from the ultimate right of way.
Okay.
The option two is the one that gets closer, and that's between four and five feet from the edge of road.
We are not sidewalk experts here, so why would we choose one over the other?
Yeah, yeah, I can see it now. This one is kind of lost.
From an engineering perspective, I don't think there's much of a difference between the two. Option one is a little bit further away from the edge of the road, and it, I think it gives you a little more flexibility if you decide to change the road in the future for whatever reason. Uh, that, 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 that was my thinking on it.
That's a really good point. And it also gives a greater buffer just in terms of distance.
And it's behind.
It, it's hard to say that, like, what if there is like a big tree that you're like, oh, well, then we have to take those five trees down? I would say then work around it.
It really doesn't matter where the sidewalk goes in here. All those trees are going to have to come down just because you can't construct that sidewalk and, and still avoid the trees.
Okay.
No matter where you put it, they're all going to be affected. The one thing is that a lot of the trees that are out there are, I think there were like some arbor by the years, some cedar or something like that that aren't really in good shape. So, um, I don't think it'll be too much of a loss in that respect.
So option one seems like our best option.
I think so. But then the issue is this, yes.
There is some concern that maybe we don't want a crosswalk because it's not a really great location for a crosswalk.
So it was mentioned, I think, uh, are you getting to the?
Under number four on, um, Gilmore's document, there is a, um, there is no existing sidewalk along the frontage of the site. However, there are sidewalks located along the south side of Nap Road. We recommend the township consider requiring the applicant to provide a designated crosswalk across Nap at the intersection of Nap and Sycamore.
And it seems like a natural place for a sidewalk, especially, uh, a crosswalk. Yeah, the school is across the street.
Elementary school.
We have the crosswalk shown on the plate.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, uh, my question was, is that?
It's, it's, um, I guess up for discussion with your traffic engineer and the township. We're, we're willing to provide it, it's just, is it a good idea?
The concern that staff and the township engineer had is Penn Doc does not support mid-block crosswalks. Um, if down the road, we wanted to put a crosswalk in as a township project and put maybe a flashing beacon there, it would be one thing, but to just put a crosswalk there, we have grave concerns about people crossing, especially the turns and twists on Nap Road.
For sure.
But aren't, uh, crosswalks considered to be traffic calming? And given that this is a residential neighborhood in front of the school, wouldn't that be, uh, advisable to include? For, for that, for the purpose of traffic calming anyway?
They can be perceived by a driver as traffic calming, but they're not installed for traffic calming purposes. We've seen plenty of people, I mean, look what we're seeing with school buses. You know, with the red lights on and the, the bar out, and we're seeing people pass them. We just have, we would want it, if we're going to do this, we would prefer to make it a township project down there and do it correctly.
I think it gives kids a perception that it's a safe place to be, and I don't know that there is a safe place to be.
But there's not gonna be, you know. There have been some places where lately where I've seen crosswalks, it seems that the beacons are now the norm. You know, um, even on, um, Drescher Road in Horsham, as wide as that is, you know, there's crosswalks because of there's office campuses on both sides. So if the board wanted to take a fee from the applicant representing the cost of that crosswalk, we could do that and then put it aside and, but again, I think we should, if we're gonna use the, if we're gonna make a crosswalk there, I think we need to have a discussion with the school district as well and possibly cost sharing for the beacon, or looking into a grant, you know, saying that's a township, school district, you know, um, project and see what we would happen there.
I think a fee in lieu of the crosswalk would be acceptable because I definitely feel like a crosswalk is appropriate there. Uh, but to your point, with a flashing beacon would be ideal.
But also to your point, the, the school district would probably share some of the costs in that with, especially with their grants and everything else. So that would make, may make sense as well. I don't know that that would. Grant application where you have, um, two municipalities, your municipality and school district always is given more favor when you put it, especially at the county level. The county has some really good programs that I think this would qualify for. Okay. But we want to study with our traffic engineers.
That's a great option.
I think so. So then, what's the next, is the timing of the sidewalks?
Do we have any other questions?
Well, the timing.
Yeah, the timing.
I, I just heard you say that, but I don't know that we addressed that.
I don't think we've addressed any discussion about timing of the sidewalks, whether or not it makes sense to, um, for sure, it seems as if most of the development of Lot One seems to be somewhat complete. I mean, they, they, there may be landscaping and internal, um, changes to that particular.
There's no development on Lot One. They're maintaining the existing house.
So what would the reason for delaying the sidewalk along Nap Road then?
Just so that every, so that everything is done at the same time and then is consistent, all done by the same contractor. Um, he's not going out there tomorrow and doing sidewalk in one section and then coming back a year later and finishing up the sidewalk. He'll have everyone out there doing everything all at the same time.
But the second lot, so if we're delaying for six months, then it says the second along Lot Two, which are the other houses along Sycamore, it says that would be up to two years. Is that what I'm?
So it, it kind of caps the, the, um, the delay of the sidewalk. So if nothing is done in a certain amount of time, then he has to put it in anyway.
So it's between six months and two years?
And two years. And he has every intention of coming here as soon as possible, getting approvals and then going to construction. So, um, I, I don't expect that it's going to go that far out, but I think that, um, the resolution is sort of, um, I guess, to the township's benefit, and then it, it will make him put it in if anything happens differently than what he's expecting.
So I guess.
It just makes sense to do all the construction part of it at the same time because it's all connected.
Yeah, more efficient. Staff had requested up to two years only because we wanted to be sure that if for some reason the market went south or interest rates spiked and nothing was done with those lots, that they would still be required to put the sidewalks in, that we wouldn't be, the board in the future wouldn't have them come in and say, why should I put sidewalks in? I'm not doing anything with these lots right now, they're bare. You can point back to the resolution and say, you agree to this, you know, between six months and two years. So if they start actively constructing those two lots and then the stormwater management gets done and the tree evaluation gets done, the sidewalks would get put in. But it all had to be discussed and decided by the board this evening so that they could move forward with the next steps.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question on time?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? So I think we're ready to make a motion. Sean, tell, do we want to capture this with a couple of changes?
Yeah, so it would be a motion to, uh, approve the resolution for the minor subdivision plan, uh, for 107 Nap Road. And I believe I heard consensus that the board was, uh, in favor of option one and also granting the four additional waivers. That's correct.
Yes.
And a fee in lieu for the crosswalk.
For the crosswalk, yeah. In addition. So we wouldn't do the crosswalk now, but we would take the fee.
So, okay, so that would be in addition to what's on here.
That's additional.
Okay.
And that's waiving the curbing, correct?
Only along Sycamore.
Just on Sycamore.
Okay.
Okay.
It makes sense to revisit the, the fee in lieu of the crosswalk with the second subdivision. That way, that way you have some time to figure out what that fee would be.
Uh, maybe ask Jim that question? Yeah. He's the one who's going to calculate. Um, we, I mean, we, we, we could probably come up with a cost now or with this next, uh, subdivision. I, I don't think it makes that much of a difference. It's, it's just a crosswalk and a, uh, a curb ramp. So we can, we could probably get a cost pretty close to what that, that would be.
Okay.
It, it's really your, your, your preference now or about a month or two from now.
I think it seems a lot cleaner if we leave that to the next time around. Encompass all that, get one through four done now. You know where you're going, where your design is, and then you come back before us with that as well.
That's fine, okay.
Good. So do we include the fee in lieu of now and, uh, the fee to be determined later?
I would say, I would say you could add that as an additional condition, yes.
Yes.
With the, with the actual calculation to be determined by the township engineer.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so we are making a motion to adopt, adopt resolution number, uh, two zero two five dash zero five approving the minor subdivision application with the requested waivers submitted by Caracocas. Saying that all along acquisitions LP. Um, we are looking at sidewalk option one. Um, we're also looking at uh, fee to be considered later on for the crosswalk. Okay, and then all of the, um, approving all of the deferrals two, three, and four. Did I catch everything?
Yes.
Good? Okay, making a motion for that.
Second.
Any public comment? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number six. Fire Department of Montgomery Township, 2025 fundraising efforts. Chief Wignan.
Good evening. Now, the Fire Department of Montgomery Township must divide the board annually before planned fundraising events, uh, per the Fire Services Agreement. Um, all the money that's obtained through fundraising or non-t township tax revenue shall be allocated in the approved budget or any budgetary amendments made by the FDMT. So the budget presentation that they give you back in October, um, these funds help support the FDMT's budget, the nonprofit side. The FDMT is seeking the board's approval of its planned fundraising activities for 2025. The following fundraising activities are proposed: residential fundraising mailer, um, that, as Beth noted, had some, uh, we had more than one or two people who said the wrong name was on the letter, so that's being addressed. Um, that's from the company they buy them from. Uh, business fundraiser, car washes, and dine and donates. Uh, the township has budgeted $10,000 to help the FDMT with fundraising activities. There's no additional cost or impact on the township's budget and there would be a positive impact on the FDMT budget for the money collected through the FDMT's fundraising activities. Um, the residential mailer is probably their biggest, uh, fundraising collection that they have. Uh, staff recommends that the board supervisor approve the 2025 planned fundraising activities for the FDMT and contribute $10,000 to the FDMT for their fundraising activities.
Any questions?
I was just curious to know how much, uh, we're, we anticipate we'll raise through those fundraising activities without outline?
Sure, so typically, um, the residential makes about $70,000 a year. Um, that's by far the biggest fundraising that they, that the FDMT does. The business is usually around 10,000 or 15,000. Uh, the car washes are usually around like 3,000, but you know, with man hours and staff hours and food and everything, that's not a real big, uh, moneymaker. And then dine and donates, uh, was like $500 last year. So the, the residential mailers is the big one.
I'll bet Santa could ask for some money for, that's a very popular, very popular effort on your part, so.
When we used to do the, uh, boot drive at the mall, that was like the big day for us.
Yeah.
We made a lot of money on the boot drive.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't do that anymore at the mall.
Okay, we're going to make a motion to approve the 2025 planned fundraising activities of the FDMT and the contribution of 10,000 to the FDMT for their fundraising activities.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number seven, Department of Fire Services, 2025 Chevy Tahoe Command SUV four-wheel drive. Chief Wignan.
Thank you. Uh, the department seeks board's approval to purchase a 2025 Chevy Tahoe Command SUV from Fred Beans Ford of Doylestown. Uh, this new vehicle is a replacement vehicle, uh, for our 2016 Tahoe that has 66,000 miles on it. Uh, the Command SUV must have the radios, the command cabinet that houses the turnout gear and, um, it has assist the minute that draws out all the air within that compartment so the passenger compartment doesn't get contaminated. Um, computers and audio visual warning devices. The department budgeted $90,000 in the 2025 capital budget to replace this SUV. Uh, we're asking for approval to purchase the SUV from Fred Beans of Doylestown, which is a PA CoStarz vendor. And then to have it outfitted, uh, by Marriott's Emergency Equipment, which also is a PA CoStarz vendor. Uh, the impact on the budget is $80,338. Again, we budgeted $90,000 and we will place the, uh, old SUV, the 2016 on municipal bid. Staff recommends that the board supervisor approve the above estimates for the purchasing and outfitting of the new Command SUV for the DFS in the amount of $80,338. Thank you.
Any questions? Nice to see, nice to see it come under budget. Can I make a motion to approve the purchasing and outfitting of a new Command SUV for the Department of Fire Services in the combined amount of $80,338 from Fred Beans of Doyle Ta- Doylestown and Marriott's Emergency Equipment and Installation?
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, a request authorization to purchase replacement police vehicles. Chief Peoples.
Good evening. In 2025, the police department is scheduled to replace three police vehicles. After researching available models and powertrains, the police department proposes purchasing three 2025 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Hybrid Vehicles and equipment as approved in the 2025 budget. Uh, three vehicles being replaced, one is a 2019, uh, Ford SUV with over 90,000 miles on it. Another one is a 2018 Ford Explorer again with over 107,000 miles on it. And the third is, um, another Ford Explorer as well. It's the administrative. And that has 69,000, over 69,000 miles on it. The first two will be sold on municipal bid and the third one, the administrative one, will be rotated to the Detective Division. And the Detective Division's 2013 Dodge Charger with over 82,000 miles on it will be sold on municipal bid with the first two vehicles. The attachment of the quotes, uh, from Fred Beans Ford, uh, CoStarz vendor, uh, to provide requested vehicles at a cost of $146,715. Uh, that's a nine percent savings using CoStarz saving over $13,000. Um, also on the quote is, um, a quote from HABUS. They are a vendor through CoStarz that provide the equipment as well as the installation of the police vehicles. Um, that's for a total cost to do this two, three vehicles for $63,180 and is 20% par, 28% off of the, um, the regular retail price for a savings of over $17,000. The total cost to replace, uh, these three police vehicles, including equipment and the labor for installation, is $209,895.88. The total of $227,592 was included in 2025 approved final budget. It is recommended that the board supervisor approve the purchase of the three patrol vehicles as well as equip, equipment as provided in the 2025 approved budget.
Any questions?
I have a question. The quotes are all from last year. Are they going to honor those prices?
They are. We've been in contact with, uh, both vendors. Uh, the one, we already have a signed agreement for the vehicles and we spoke to HABUS today and the prices are remaining the same there as well.
Great. The budget total, uh, was $227,592 for police vehicles and emergency equipment. Are these going to require any additional, uh, equipment that would have fallen into that budget? And do you anticipate that the total, uh, is going to come in under budget?
Yes, right now we're coming in at 209,000. It was budgeted for 227, so we're coming in under the amount we thought it was going to be.
Yes, I understood that part. I was wondering if there was any additional equipment that we were going to need for this that would have also been included in that total budget?
No, it was not. Nope, that's it.
Truly?
No.
Yes.
All right, awesome.
Seems too good to be true.
I mean, nothing, nothing was coming in under a budget for how like, you know?
Yeah.
Good, this is both of these. This is great. Okay, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion to award the contract for the purchase of three 2025 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Hy- Hybrid Vehicles from Fred Beans Ford Lincoln as authorized vendor under the CoStarz Cooperative Purchase Program at a total cost of, so, um, this was corrected, um, supervisor Long, uh, pointed out that the, um, amount should be one, $146,715 per their quote.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Then the second motion is to award the contract for the purchase and installation of equipment for their vehicles from HABUS Inc. An authorized vendor under the CoStarz Cooperative Purchase Program at a total cost of $63,180.88 per their quote.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Okay, item number nine is a request authorization to purchase community and recreation center AV.
Uh, for 2024, staff included $40,000 in the budget under event room upgrades for audio visual improvements to the rec center community room or event room, depending on who you're talking to. Could be one of the two, um, names given to the, uh, the main event room over there at the rec center. A proposal from Cenaro dated January 30th, 2025 for the AV upgrades include installation totals $39,905. The project will enhance the audio visual experience in the community room by upgrading the control panels. Uh, it's got the original control panel touchscreen for 2014 and then the analog panel underneath the large television in there has been replaced and, um, fixed multiple times. So this will replace that with a touchscreen, a brand new one. Um, and will also enable completely wireless presentations from the podium. So a lot of the issues we have over there, the wires are constantly getting bent and broke. We've gone through dozens and dozens of HDMI cables over there. This will allow the podium to be put anywhere in the room and allow them to speak. Um, they'll be getting, I'm like, so much what you see here so they can take it out, put it on the podium, no wires, uh, be able to wirelessly display as well. Uh, these pre, uh, improvements will increase ease of use and provide a more seamless presentation experience. It is recommended that the board supervisors approve the quote for the community room AV upgrade from Cenaro an authorized vendor under the CoStarz Cooperative Purchase Program at a total cost of $39,905 per their quote.
Any questions? Very talented.
It took a while to get there. Yeah, we started this back in October, but got them under budget.
Make a motion to award the contract for the purchase and installation of the community room AV upgrade from Cenaro under the CoStarz Cooperative Purchase Program at a total cost of $39,905 per their quote.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10 is recognition of government communicators day, February 21st, 2025. Township manager Carolyn McCreary.
Thank you. In your pocket, you have a proclamation for recognizing government communicators day, February 21st, 2025. Um, this township is fortunate to have staff, um, dedicated to our, not just communication, but resident engagement. And, um, you are now the community that everybody else points to. Um, I was just at a conference last week and, you know, managers are talking about, oh, I see you did this on LinkedIn. Oh, I see, I saw your Facebook page and that's what we want to see. And, um, you know, Derek is very good at following the metrics. Um, we know we're very fortunate that the board saw fit to let us have, um, that in, in-house because this is not a job that you just assign to someone else and say, okay, you're our social media coordinator now or you're going to do the e-news weekly. Um, they are constantly looking for ways to improve it so that it is a more engaging experience for people, whether it's the graphics on the e-news or the way we present things on Facebook. For example, we, we reposted our finance director, um, position on LinkedIn and, um, through some sarcastic and witty banter in the office, we took our lifelike buddy, the elf, and put it in the desk and said, we're looking for a new buddy. And low and behold, we got 11 applications in. So maybe it was because it was after the holidays, but I like to think that it's, you know, engagement as well, that, you know, you, you set yourself apart. And then once somebody comes in, it's our job to sell ourselves and, um, we do a really good job of that. So I'm hoping that the board will agree and, um, put the proclamation in place for government communicators day.
That's a reflection of our culture and it's, it's, I think, a wonderful reflection on, uh, a great culture that's supportive and, um, and fun. And that's where, you know, people want to work.
Well, as we said, we don't take ourselves too seriously, but we get our work done. And, you know, example of that, you know, the, it's great to see projects and purchases come in under budget, but there's a lot of work that goes into that. You know, um, Rich browbeat those vendors and said, I need to come in under this budget. You know, we need to have this done because this is going to enhance the experience of users over there. It's also something we can use to market and say, you know, or if you're looking to have or host a, a meeting for your company and maybe you don't have the space, you know, we have this really great room, you know, that has wireless capabilities that you can do training in or you can do team building in. So it's all enhancing the experience and, you know, um, going on CoStarz, it's not an easy task because you have to verify, somebody will say, oh, I'm a CoStarz vendor until we start digging deep, digging deep. And it's okay, you're a CoStarz vendor for this, but not this. So, you know, the chiefs are, you know, to be lauded as well for the work that they do. And I know Greg, you know, we go through a bidding process, but sometimes we have to get three quotes and he uses the relationships that the township has built up to, you know, work with vendors who we know will give us a good product as well as, you know, be fair in their pricing. We are stewards of taxpayer money. We're very cognizant of that every day.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you for everything. What, was there any particular reason on this day, February 21st?
That is government communicators day. So we wanted to make sure we did it before it occurred as opposed to doing it at your next meeting, which is three days after it.
Right, the day, okay, all right. Um, do we want to officially read the proclamation?
Uh, if you would like, I can certainly do that or if you would like to as the chair, it's your.
Yeah, I would, I would love to read. I think it's great. I, um, want to take a moment to recognize it because I, I think it is significant that the communication that we do within our township is really honestly second to none, as far as I'm concerned. So it's, it's a great job. Um, okay, whereas the role of government communication profession is to inform, educate, and engage their communities. And whereas robust communication is government creates trust and inspires residents to take action and be involved. And whereas government communications create relationships and calls to action, build awareness and understanding through storytelling, engage and foster engagement on civic issues and use, and use all channels to include people in critical decisions. And whereas it is essential to have strong communications in government because it is a fun, foundational element of living in a democracy where citizens have freedom to make their voice heard. And whereas the township is proud and has deep gratitude and recognition for government communicators, professionalism, dedication, hard work, commitment, enthusiasm, and sacrifice. Now therefore, I, the chairwoman of the Montgomery Township Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim February 21st, 2025, 2025 as government communicators day. In Montgomery Township, PA, and encourage all residents. to thank the members of the Public Information Office who have dedicated their careers to ensure the township has effective, impactful, and successful communication strategies that resonate and are relevant. Thank you. That is well, well done.
Do we need a second?
No, well, I'm gonna formally motion to recognize Government Communicators Day on February 21st, 2025.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 11 is the appointment of deputy, deputy tax collector. Carolyn McCreary.
Thank you. Act 164 of 2014 was adopted by the state legislature and signed by the governor in October of that year. The act revises the local tax collection law to include a requirement that the tax collector will, with the approval of the tax district and their surety, appoint a deputy tax collector to collect and settle taxes during any incapacitation of the tax collector. Patricia Gallagher, elected tax collector from Montgomery Township, has submitted a request that Patricia Graham be appointed as the deputy tax collector from Montgomery Township. Ms. Graham is the Worcester Tax Collector. Staff is recommending that the board of supervisors approve the appointment of Ms. Graham as the deputy tax collector for Montgomery Township.
Is this a paid position, or is it just?
No, it's just, it's just, it's a backup so that if something ever happens to the tax collector, the law now requires that she has someone who can collect the taxes in her place.
Is there a term? Like, at what point would she always be? What if she is, I think tax collectors are on?
It's not an elected position. It's just a requirement that the legislature put in place. It was Jane Murray, and she retired from Upper Gwinnett as their tax collector and had been still listed as our deputy, so.
Okay, I was wondering why this came up.
This was updated. I'm sorry.
That's what I didn't understand. I was like, wait, where did this come from?
That was, you just answered.
I'm sorry. She recognized that we were still had someone on there who was no longer. And the reason she picks another tax collectors because they're already bonded. There is not an issue about whether they should actually meet the bonding requirement. So we're covered there.
Well, you just answered all four of my questions and just by saying that we had someone.
2014.
So is this, I did have a couple of other questions. All other municipalities, do they, does everyone have a deputy tax collector?
They are supposed to. I cannot tell you what they're doing, but the law requires them to. I know when I was in Bucks, we had to reach out to the tax collector, and she had to do the same thing, and she took another tax collector from another community so that in the event, especially in light of how many people pay their taxes in person here, people who, you know, and also, you know, collect them from the mailbox, if she were to become ill, we need to know that people's taxes are still gonna be processed in a timely manner. They're not gonna suddenly get it with penalties or, you know, late notices from the taxing districts.
Do we know, is our tax collector a deputy for other municipalities?
That I do not know.
And then the only other question I had was, that's an elected position. So God forbid something happened to Pat Gallagher. Would this woman serve for the rest of the term, or would we have a special election to?
No, I believe you, you would appoint a new tax collector.
We would.
For the duration of the term.
This would just be a temporary.
Yes. Somebody gets the flu and is gonna be out a week. Somebody breaks the leg and they can't get into the building. Yes.
Okay, okay. Great, all right. Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Patricia Graham as a deputy tax collector for Montgomery Township.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number 12, The Wall That Heals update. Township Manager Carolyn McCreary.
Thank you. I wanted to give the board an update because it's been a while since we've talked about this, and we are in fact less than 170 days out from hosting The Wall That Heals. The website is now live. We received approval from the foundation. There is a shortcut to it so that people don't have to type out the whole entire website. So the shortcut is monttp.org backslash The Wall That Heals. We have cards that we're gonna be coming up with a distribution. Some I'm gonna give to the board tonight so that you can give them to your various organizations that you're involved with. Has a QR code on there. Staff visited with representatives from Upper Providence who hosted The Wall in 2023. We saw the site where they hosted it. Our parking is better, our site layout is better, so it's just sort of added to our confidence. But in keeping with the spirit of municipal neighbors, they offered us information that we didn't have to come up with ourselves. They gave us signs, you know, that they had at the park. They offered us equipment. They have mats that they use that they'll let us use so that when we need to move things around, we don't have to worry about disturbing the ground. They'll give us the mats. We just have to go and pick them up. Along those lines, we met with the county chief Wiggman, arranged for the county to come in, and we talked to them about logistics for the site, things we might need to borrow from them, including like a cooling tent so that there's someplace, because it is gonna be July, so we have to sort of assume that we are gonna probably have a hot spell, even though it's, we've also had Julys where it's cool. They're gonna do a tabletop exercise with us so that we can sort of go through what we would do in the event that we had an issue with a lot of people suffering from the heat. Bill, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that at all, or like some of the things that they, that we might take from them, borrow from them?
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna work on getting some cooling tents, like the boss said, and then some, I think we got North Wales Water Authority is, the boss got their, their big gallon potable water thing, so we'll always have water on site. I think the major concern from emergency management's point of view is the heat, the number of people and the demographics of those people, and then if we were to get one of those summer storms. So they're the things that we're pre-planning for, and the county will be out in May to do a tabletop exercise, like the boss said, that will focus on a heat emergency, but also have some injects in all of public works and police and EMS. So hopefully, we'll do our best to be prepared.
So as Bill alluded to, I did reach out to the executive director of North Wales Water Authority, and I said, I hear you have a giant tanker, a freshwater, and we would like to have it for the site so that we don't have to have 10 million bottles of water. And they were very gracious. They also said if we need anything else in the way of sponsorships or volunteers. So we, we've been collecting names as people have reached out to us, you know, especially about sponsorships. Jen Ames, our GIS analyst, has worked on a site map along with Chief Peoples, so that we submitted that to say, this is where we think things are gonna go. And we got feedback from the foundation. They saw things a little differently, so then Jen arranged with one of the firefighters to go out and run the drone so that they could actually see what the, the actual park looked like. So we're gonna send that information to them. We, Lieutenant Doherty is working on a procession route. We are working with Valley Forge Park to start that as being where the procession would start. So the tractor trailer would go there. It would have a motorcycle escort. It would have Vietnam veterans on motorcycles in the front and then other motorcycles in the back. We are working on outreach with a number of civic groups and organizations, veterans groups. We, this, I personally went to a couple of the committees, the township committees, and introduced the Wall That Heals concept. We went to, the county had a veterans resource training, which our solicitor was at, and we went there and talked about the Wall That Heals to that group. So we are doing everything we need to do to get things in place. We set a list to the foundation of our committee structure. We're setting up a sign up for volunteers as well as we're determining like what sponsorship levels will be and what they will get. Because like right now, we envision, say, the whole driveway of the park being lined with large American flags. And obviously, if you sponsor a certain level, a flag would go in, and we're gonna have a sign at the end. We want it to be really tasteful. So anything we do, we want to make sure that, you know, we don't take away from it. Deb has contacts with North Penn High School, so we are working to get some students to do taps at night. One night, the lights will be colored with cellophane, for lack of a better term, which Upper Providence believes they still have leftover, so they're gonna give it to us. So one night it'll be orange and recognizing those service members who were affected by Agent Orange. One night will be teal, recognizing service members who were affected by PTSD, even though it wasn't diagnosed at that back then. There is gonna be a memoriam so that if someone has a loved one who passed away after the war, that they would be recognized. I'm working with the chairwoman on the opening ceremony, trying to get some of the dignitaries lined up that we can have, you know, come to it. When we spoke to.
The governor's office to try to get this on the governor's.
We're hearing, yeah. That's what we are, yeah. The governor is a Montgomery County resident, and we think this would be an ideal because the other location is Shaler Township, which is out by Pittsburgh. And now, you know, we've got it, so we want them. See, what else is I gonna tell you? The volunteers, we've had a number of people who've reached out about volunteering. Our engineering firm, Gilmore Associates, you know, when Upper Providence hosted it, they sent a team out there to help. So it's, we're really excited. I think, and the more people hear about it, the more they're asking, what can we do? I was at a BDP meeting, and someone handed me their business card and had their cell phone number on it and said, whatever you need, you know, reach out. So it's, it's really, it's coming together. It's a lot of work, but at the end, it's gonna be such an honor for this community, and we're proud to be able to do it. If we, if we can, I think this is amazing. There are a number of, I'm always stunned when I go to retirement communities, how many people are veterans or have family members, of course. But obviously, Miss Chaminade Falls and Hudson Estates.
Yep, we have a list.
Yes, I figured you probably.
Ava did a list for Deb's, you know, request. She did a four-hour radius.
Great.
Which, you know, it took, it encompasses faith-based organizations, BFWs, you know, all, all the organizations that she could find to reach out to because for some people, this is the closest they will get to it. They're not gonna be able to get to Washington, but they'll be able to come to Montgomery Township.
Especially as they're aging.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. We're looking at, working with a distributor to get some golf carts and let them have their sign on the back because this way we can drive people up to the wall who, you know, mobility might be an issue. So anything that we can think of, and that's why Upper Providence is really helpful, because they, they told us what worked, what didn't work, you know, what they might have done differently. So, you know, we're already, like, we already arranged for water. We're talking about food. We're, you know, T-shirts for the volunteers, a challenge coin when they're finished. So, yeah, it's coming together.
Love it. Thank you.
When was it in Upper Providence?
I just know it was in 2023. It was October, yeah. So, and they told us, this is what I tell you, the three and a half days the wall was there, they had 13,000 visitors.
Wow. So this is, this is a big undertaking.
Great. Great update.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the group? New stuff, old stuff?
Since we were talking about the tax collector a couple of meetings ago, we had something about increasing fees. Is there any update on that?
I've heard nothing back from her.
All right, great. Well, if that is it, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.